Melton.
Here.
Rowe.
Here.
Bagley.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Hug.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pleasure remarks by Councilmember Melton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming today. Everybody have a seat. This is my favorite time of the year in Omaha every year. It's the College World Series. So, I have enjoyed it since I was a kid, having three boys of my own. We've had a lot of great family memories with the kids going down to games. So, I really hope everyone can get down to a game, or just get downtown and meet some of the wonderful people that will be visiting our city over the next couple of weeks. And I wish all the teams the best of luck. So, thank you.
Thank you.
An affidavit application is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to hearing from you on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. And if you have difficulty hearing today, please see our clerk here for the Public Building Commission for devices that may be able to help you. We do have a few items to, I want to mention today, and then we do have a proclamation to read before we start our regular meeting. The first couple of things I just wanted to say was, we are not meeting next week, and that's because of the Juneteenth holiday. So, I wanted to recognize that important holiday in our city, with events that happened over the weekend, for sure, but then with the actual official holiday being Wednesday. And then I wanted to mention two individuals, prominent citizens, that have passed in the last month, that I think are worthy of our mention today. And one is Carol Woods-Harris, a longtime county board member, a pioneer in her own right, both in the corporate community, but then as the first African-American woman elected to the county board. And on top of that, a super-nice person. So, I wanted to recognize her today and her family. I know her services have already taken place. And then, secondly, I wanted to recognize a friend of mine, back from the high school days, who also passed away just recently, John Heaston. He was the publisher of The Reader and Alperico, a really innovative journalistic mind, a music aficionado, one of the really forces behind some of our music festivals we have here in town now. And actually, on the day of his passing, was being recognized by the Omaha Press Club that very same day for his citizenship and for his career and profession. So, I wanted to mention him today, too, and our thoughts are with him and his family. And his celebration of life is actually July 28th at Elmwood Park. So, I wanted to make that announcement today, too. Okay. We'll now proceed to our proclamation that is honoring Language Access Week. I believe we have Leah Whitney Shabas with us today, if you want to come down. What we'll do is we'll read this proclamation on behalf of Language Access Week, present that to you, and then see what kind of remarks you may have. You'd be free to address it yourself as well. Okay? So, the proclamation reads like this. Whereas World Speaks was founded in 2016 with a mission to ensure every person in our community has equal access to critical and vital information, resources, community engagement, and belonging, no matter what language they speak. And whereas Nebraska is home to more than 145,000 immigrants and refugees, individuals who account for 9% of the labor force, and 8% of state earnings. And whereas there are nearly 21,000 students in the Omaha Public Schools District who speak 108 different languages at home, other than English, accounting for 42% of the total K-12 grade student population. And whereas Nebraska, and specifically Omaha, is an incredibly linguistically diverse community whose need for language access is urgent as a means to bridging language barriers. And whereas now is the time to educate our community on how to incorporate language access in places of business, schools, nonprofit organizations, government, and the communities in which we live, work, and play, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Omaha officially designates the week of June 10th to the 14th as Language Access Week in Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you, President Frederson, and the other members of the city council, for the acknowledgement of language accessibility during this inaugural Language Access Week. Thank you to the World Speaks team, our partners standing with us today during Language Access Week, and every week leading up to this point and in the future. Thank you to Cox Communications, Kathmandu Station, the Omaha Community Foundation, Envato Industries for supporting this week of language access. Thank you, most importantly, to the community that we serve. You may be wondering, what is language access? Put simply, language access ensures that everyone in our community has equal access to critical and vital information, resources, events, and community in their preferred language, or a language that they understand. It is not only for individuals with limited English proficiency, but also individuals who have cognitive disabilities, literacy skills, and as well as our deaf and hard-of-hearing community. We are thrilled that the City of Omaha is leading the way, because as we know, we don't coast. We are proud that Omaha recognizes the current community need for equitable language access. We are excited to work together to make Omaha more accessible for all. We hope to continue building around this cause, and we challenge businesses, organizations, and government entities to be inclusive of these audiences by intentionally and thoughtfully planning when holding events and providing services to the communities you serve. Language access is equal access. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a liquor license addition application for Gray's Craze located at 220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3109, to add an outdoor area.
Councilmembers, this item was laid over from the June 4th meeting. The public hearing and vote is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David Houghton, 8204 South 87th Ave. Here today on behalf of applicant 402 Craze LLC, doing business as Gray's Craze, located at 220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3109. The request today is for a Class C license for an expansion on the patio area. The hours of operation are currently 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The concept is charcuterie, and then wine, beer, and a few cocktails. They are going to expand their hours on the patio and in the main restaurant until 10:00 PM on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. If the council members have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And also, my client, Danny Akich, is appearing via video conference. Thank you.
Thank you. And does your client wish to speak as well?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak to this item? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. David, a couple of questions. Good afternoon.
Sure.
This was postponed from last week. Your client wasn't here, so I know staff reached out to him and had a conversation with him. And I left him a message yesterday, so I appreciate you being here on his behalf. So, just confirm for me, you said the hours are currently 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
That's correct.
Okay. And then on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you're going to keep it open with the patio with this approval today. It'll close at 10:00 PM?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to support this. Mr. President, I believe we need to waive park rule number seven.
Second. There's a motion, a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item seven, to consider a Class C liquor license for Infusion Brewing Company located at 6271 South 118th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
William Beburek, 7905 South 45th Avenue. I'm the owner of Infusion Brewing Company.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Mr. Rowe, you're acknowledged.
Thank you. I just wanted to check. I noticed, Bill, in the comments in the file that I got, that you also own Crescent Moon.
Mm-hmm.
So, my question is, are you going to be serving Reuben sandwiches at this?
Unfortunately not. We're just, we just concentrate pretty much on beer out there, yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you.
No further lights.
Wish it was that easy.
There's a motion, a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item eight, to consider a Class I liquor license for Al Jawsa Sushi, located at 163 North 78th Street, Suite 163.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Biao. First name, last name is Gao.
Thank you. And your address, too?
163 North 78th Street.
Okay. Are there any other proponents today?
Nope.
Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item nine, to consider a Class I liquor license for Lucy's 3137, located at 3108 North 118th Street, Suite C2.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. We have the, I thought we had the applicant by Zoom, unless you're here in person?
I am actually Kyle Sassy. I'm the general manager for Lucy's.
Okay.
My address is 34 Pinecrest Drive, Uten. We are here for a, to speak on the Class C liquor license for Lucy's. My apologies, I know that there's three of them. First one is 3137.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take them each separately. And do we also have an Alan Meyer here to speak to this item by Zoom?
We have, we have Mike Meyer, and then I think Alan is here by Zoom.
Okay. Would you like him to be recognized? Are you together?
Yes, all of, yes, all of us are together.
Okay.
On this one, yes.
Okay. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Number nine, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Excellent.
Item 10, to consider a Class I liquor license for Lucy's 5110, located at 5060 South 118th Street, Suite D10.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Sassy, address 34 Pinecrest Drive.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson.
Motion to approve.
Motion, a second. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kyle, can you kind of explain to us the concept behind what you're going to do in these three stores?
Absolutely. Wine and cheese is essentially the basis of the, of the business. Cocktails, coffee, essentially a place to come relax. There will be keno on hand, and then as well skill games.
Okay. Are they all going to be the same?
The wine and cheese concept is, is being carried across. There are also a couple of other concepts that have been tossed around, but essentially, the wine and cheese was what we were, what we were working with.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 11, to consider a Class I liquor license for Lucy's Applewood, located at 9729 Q Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Proponent once again is Kyle Sassy, 34 Pinecrest Drive.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks. Good luck.
Item 12, to consider a Class D liquor license for bottles and brews, located at 10745 Mockingbird Drive.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Proponent Venkata Ram Kishwar Gade, residing at 6006 South 171st Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here to answer any question related to Class D liquor license for Tri-Unit Holdings LLC, great name as bottles and brews, located at 10745 Mockingbird Drive, Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 13 through 16 can be considered together for Hanover Falls Center, located northwest of 156th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 13 and 14, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and MU District. Item 15, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 16, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 13 through 16 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Ozzy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. I make myself available for any questions council may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I think it's inappropriate for the mayor to keep getting blamed for these chuck holes and all these businesses who are billing and doing a lot of wonderful jobs.
156th and State Streets.
Yeah, they're billing. Have you been going through the community lately? And see all the streets there are tearing up, the new builders. We want the building to go. The building and all the progress is wonderful, but the mayor shouldn't have to be responsible for the holes they're putting in the street. In fact, go to Mr. Bagley Dickson on Dodge, Burger King right across the street.
It's got to be to this development proposal here.
All of them. We want all the builders to start putting money aside to fix some of the streets.
Okay.
Every last one of them, starting today, maybe.
Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Thank you. Kyle, I just, I just wanted to say I'm glad to see this project is moving forward. I love to see the, the growth out there, and I wanted to let them know we are currently continuing to work on finding land for a new fire station that's going to be built out in that area. So, it should make the, the people that potentially will be moving in there very happy. So, with that, I will, motion to approve. Second.
There's a motion, a second. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes. When do we expect to break ground, and when will the development be completed?
The overall development included the mix of some of the apartments that are now completed on that, that corner. It wasn't part of the original mixed use, but part of the development as a whole. We are gaining some traction, having a few users interested in going through the planning process and the contract process, but at this point, I can't mention any, who any of those users are.
Does that conclude your remarks?
That concludes my remarks.
All right, thank you. There's no further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Items 17 through 19 can be considered together for Purple Martin Hill, located northwest of 180th Street and Purple Martin Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 17, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R6 District. Item 18, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 19, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 17, 18, and 19 are today. Proponents, please.
John Coolidge, 14710 West Dodge Road, engineer for the project, here on behalf of the applicant, Sheltering Tree. So, this is the entitlement process, the plating, subdivision agreement, and change of zoning associated with the Purple Martin site, which is northwest of 180th and Fort. It's a 20-acre parcel, and we're final plating seven acres of that today. And it's an exciting project, because Denise Geringer, who's with Sheltering Tree, and Rob Wood, who are with me today, and maybe will speak a little bit. It's going to be a living, assisted living facility for 50 adults with disabilities. So, we're really excited to, to get the council's approval today for this project. We'll be installing the public infrastructure. There's a new public street and sewers that, that we as engineers will design, and we'll get that done. That's what we're here for today. But as soon as we get this plat recorded, we'll turn in a building permit for the, for the project. So, looking forward to the council's support, and I believe Denise can maybe make a few remarks about the project.
Thank you. Other proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Denise Geringer, Sheltering Tree, 7307 Ponderosa Drive in Papillion. I know you've, you've heard about us before. We are housing for adults with developmental disability. These are low-income housing projects. We have, this is our fourth project. We have one located in Bellevue, one in, on the outskirts of Marion's campus on 72nd and Ames Circle, a location in Papillion that recently opened this past December, and then next on to Purple Martin Hill. Sheltering Tree builds and operates affordable housing for adults with developmental disabilities. We have amenities that are attractive to them, such as community activities onsite, tenant assistance that live onsite for cases of emergency, and to mitigate any kind of communication that has to go between the management company and the tenant. We are guided by our four core values of safety, affordability, community, and self-determination. This particular location will be a replica, a very similar replica of what we just opened at our Papillion location. It will offer 44 affordable housing units for adults with developmental disabilities. And I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Johnny, it's going to have to be to 180th Street, right, in Purple Martin Hill?
My only objection, Mr. Frederson, is these builders are tearing up our streets. Have you noticed?
No, you got to stay to this agenda item. Purple Hill.
I, I, what I want you to get across to you, sir, is what I'm trying to get across to you. They're doing a wonderful job, these developers, but they also tear up the streets. You should set aside some money for the city to fix that.
Other opponents to Purple Martin Hill? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Ms. Melton.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to thank you for continuing with your building. If you want to come back up. I don't really have any questions, other than I've toured the, I've toured your place behind Marion, actually, one of the tenants, and he was very proud to show me his apartment. He's doing very well, and I just love how you are strategically placing these all over our city. And when I talk about our city, our expanded city, Papillion, Bellevue, and now having this location, I just love your, kind of your planning strategy, where you have them in all areas, so that the adults can maybe even stay by their family members, and they don't have to necessarily move to the other side of town in order to enjoy one of the units. So, thank you for your continued investment in our city and into persons with disabilities, because they're now being able to live independently, which without one of your places may never have happened. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. I might also add that there are currently in Omaha, the Omaha metro area, 1,820 adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities that are living with caregivers over the age of 60. So, we're going to have a housing crisis quite quickly. So, we're working.
Not really a stat I wanted to hear, but I appreciate the fact that you know that, and you're working, you're working towards that.
Thank you. That's what fuels us, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Nothing further.
Mr. Harding.
Denise, sorry. I'll get you right before you sit down. Much as Councilmember Melton was talking about, too, I think we met a couple of years ago on this, and I appreciate your continued effort strategically locating these around Omaha, and look forward to the next one, because as you just pointed out, we know we have a need, a great need, and this is a great project. And so, I, I'm glad you're forging forward with this one, and look forward to the next. And John, thanks for your work on this as well, too.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, want to thank you for your, the work you're doing. In my other job at Millard Lumber, we, in the past, have worked with the Young Adult Program through Millard Public Schools, and I've gotten to be friends with a lot of those people. I see them at Hy-Vee. I see them at church. I see them all around town. One of my friends that attends the church I do is a raving fan. He moved into the latest facility. And, you know, the, what they communicate to me at the lumberyard was they, those workers that were working for us wanted independence, and they wanted respect. And that's really what they wanted. And they find both at your facility. And so, thank you for what you're doing. Thanks for the, the risk that you're taking, and for finding a way to build affordable housing for us. Appreciate that.
Thank, thank you for your comments. I have to share that our founders are parents who are trying to solve a problem, and the majority of my staff are parents of adults with developmental disabilities. So, we're, we are, this is a vocation for us, and I appreciate your comments. So, thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Items 20 through 23 can be considered together for the hill located northeast of 168th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 20 and 21, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and MU District. Item 22, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 23, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 23 through 23 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. Bradley Hike, 10836 Old Mill Road with TD2. We're engineers for the project, here on behalf of the applicant, to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton.
Yes, thank you. Again, thanks for the continued development in northwest Omaha. Really appreciate that. And the new fire station, I think, will benefit your development as well. So, with that, I'll motion to approve.
There's a motion, a second. Ms. Johnson.
Yes. Hi. How are you today?
Good. How are you?
Good. Would you mind coming back up? Thank you. Just a quick question. How much engagement did you have in the community?
Me, personally, not, not much.
How much engagement was done on behalf of this effort?
Worked with most of the neighborhoods surrounding there. There's an interlocal agreement to do 168th and State Street project that's ongoing. So, there was some interaction with, with most of neighboring subdivisions.
Okay. Thank you. I just was curious.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 24, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUR overlay district, located to PUR overlay district located at three-three-two-four North Sixteenth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-four is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Mr. Frederson, counsel of Omaha, Nebraska, Donnie R. Johnson. And the military, when tanks go in and tear up the streets, who paid for it?
Donnie, you gotta speak to North Sixteenth Street, or otherwise you're off topic.
Well, we want these developers to start paying for some of these chuck holes and stop blaming the mayor. That's all. They should be responsible and not leave after they do their wonderful job and pay for the chuck holes.
You're off topic. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Motion to approve.
I'll second. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items twenty-five through twenty-nine were held on June fourth. There's no further lights, is there a motion? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
There's been requests to remove some items off the consent agenda. So those items are thirty-six through thirty-nine and forty-one through forty-three. We'll take those items individually. So first, we'll have public hearings on agenda items thirty through thirty-five and number forty. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items thirty through thirty-five and number forty.
Hello, councilmembers. I'd like to address item thirty-three, resolution number thirty-three. My name is Debbie Denenberg. I live at twelve-seven-twelve Leavenworth Road in Omaha. And I wrote a letter that was to be distributed this morning. I just wondered if that was pretty short notice. Did anybody get it? Did you see it?
It was distributed, yes.
Okay. So my family owns thirty-five-fifty-eight, thirty-five-sixty, and thirty-five-sixty-two Farnham Street, which is the neighbors to thirty-five-seventy-eight Farnham Street, which is applying for a keynote license. And we strongly oppose this keynote lottery, application of second wind, and we urge the city council to deny that license, or at least to delay until we can hear from some of the other much bigger and more important businesses on the block. A quick Google search, which I recommend everybody scratch the service and do, is keynote addictive, reveals reams of information about addictive gambling. I'm quoting from the Baltimore Sun, keynote players risk swift addiction, out of control within two to three weeks. Addiction that requires money not only ruins the addict's life, but it can cause crime, break-ins, employees losing paychecks, and, you know, other social ills. And it disproportionately affects youth and the poor. So I had a firsthand experience. I was the general manager. My family owned both the upstairs and the firehouse dinner theaters in Omaha. And I actually managed the Goldenrod Showboat Theater in charming St. Charles, Missouri, which is very much like Omaha. And I was there when gambling moved in. And within a month, we had a male manager who beat up a girlfriend. We had our first break-ins ever. We had employees that had gone next door and lost their entire paycheck in one day. It was really a shame. I will also tell you, if you have any doubts at all, think about where we are in the world. Modern keynote is played with computers, not with paper. And with the swift onset of artificial intelligence, now gambling apps can actually personalize themselves to you personally. So artificial intelligence can tell a computer exactly what prompts, exactly what colors, exactly what will keep somebody gambling longer and for more money. So the other thing that I started with is, please consider the neighborhood. Across the street is the new seventy million dollars Clifton Cottonwood Hotel. Also across the street is Homegrown, a new restaurant operation. I have not spoken to their owners, but I understand they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on that location. The Oracle of Omaha office is just across the street. And I think the streetcar is determined to come right down the street. So before we put a gambling operation into a very small place on that street, perhaps we should hear from the other owners on that street that have a great deal at stake. And again, I would say, if my talk, and I will leave a couple of letters if you haven't seen them, have not convinced you, please delay this vote. I received the May thirty-first notice request around June third. That was the day my dad went into hospice. And this is not really a sad story. He was a World War II veteran. He flew open cockpit planes for the Navy. He was a member of the Greatest Generation, and he spent his career helping the poor and the underdog. And many have said, and he died Thursday on D-Day. So many have said to me, you know, that character of the Greatest Generation is a disappearing breed. And I hopefully disagree. I hope that our own city council members will vote not just for the extra dime, but for what's best for our whole community. And speaking of money, there is a respected and unanswered by the gambling community study by Earl Grinnell, professor of economics at the University of Illinois. He conducted research on this very issue. And he said that for every dollar the city raises from gambling, it costs three dollars in social ills, bankruptcies, crime, et cetera. So I urge you not to take that losing bet and vote either to delay till we can hear from the Cottonwood and Homegrown, or vote against this proposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items?
Hello, Mr. President, councilmembers. I'm here to support resolution thirty. Jenny Tees, Bar and Blues. My name is Victor Breen. I'm general manager and managing partner, thirty-eight twenty-five North Thirtieth Street.
Okay, thank you. Just here for any questions. Appreciate it. Councilmembers, I know we, oh, other, go ahead. If you have other people on these items, please come down. Councilmembers, I know we also have Melody on behalf of Big Red Kino by Zoom, if anyone has questions for her on these items, too.
Hi. My name is Becky Kellogg, and I'm here for resolution number thirty-two for the liquor license manager application, to appoint me as the person holding the Class D liquor license located at the Murphy's Gas Station, location eight-seven-seven-four, located at ninety-eight-ten Reddick Avenue. But there's also the Murphy's Gas Station, eight-eight-one-one, four-one-one-one South one hundred and thirty-second Street, which is my location.
Okay.
So I don't know if I'm supposed to say anything more. I've never done this before.
You're doing fine. Here for any other questions, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on these items? This is thirty through thirty-five and number forty. Okay. Seeing none, those public hearings are closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted, you don't have to get up, but I did get your letter today that you sent, that the council received. And I am going to support this, but I do appreciate you taking the time and the information you sent. I just am comfortable with Blackstone and the Crescent Moon with the keynote license. But I do want to offer my condolences to your father. What a beautiful tribute to our nation on the eightieth anniversary of D-Day. That was a fitting resting in peace day for your father on that very special day for our nation. So I want to offer my condolences for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve items thirty through thirty-five and forty.
I'll second. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item thirty-six, a resolution to approve amendment number one to the professional services agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for oversight of steel inspection services on the Seventy-second Street at D Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Steve Rue, construction street maintenance engineer for City of Omaha, one-one-five-four-six Farnham. I can answer any questions you guys might have about this.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Steve, I have a few questions. Was looking for HDR to be present to answer some of these questions. Perhaps you can answer those questions for them, since I'm sure you reached out to them earlier and
I will do what I can.
Perhaps they decided not to show up.
I will do what I can.
All right. Wonderful. What are the qualifications and certifications that these inspectors hold?
I don't actually, I don't know off the top of my head the specific specifications that are required, or certifications that are required for this. I do know that there are specific certifications that are required for the inspection of these girders as they're being constructed. Typically, in these situations, if you guys don't know, our vendors come from the state of Nebraska. We have an agreement worked out with the NDOT to go do those inspections. This is the first time, and I guess as long as I am aware, that this has occurred where somebody somehow got such a good deal on these girders that it was worth the shipping cost to have them made somewhere else. And so we've just reached out to somebody that has the same certifications that we would use for Nebraska to go inspect them in that place.
So when we made the decision to choose this organization, we did not validate qualifications and certifications for this.
The decision to hire HDR for this project was made before the bid. They were the designing firm as well, so we were kind of already on this path
Committed?
to do this. In the end, while this was unexpected and maybe, you know, whatever, I think some part of this is, you know, the bid that we got, we were two million more or more dollars underneath the engineer's estimate for this project. A huge part of that was this deal that the contractor got on these girders to go have these girders constructed somewhere else. So while probably in the future, we may take a different path to ensure that we have this situation covered in one way, shape, or form before the bid. This is sort of just an offset for a lot of that money that we saved. I still think we're way ahead, even though this is probably not the preferred path.
Thank you. Are there any specific standards and codes that the inspection service follow?
Yes, there definitely are, and I do not know them off the top of my head.
So do you know who might have that information?
HDR would likely have that information.
But they're not here to answer that question, right?
Or I could get that information for you, yes.
Good, good, good for transparency, right?
Councilmember Johnson?
Good for transparency.
Oh.
I think Mr. Sipick can answer that question if you'd like him to.
Yeah, I think if you look at the documents, it'll talk about the qualifications of the company that's included here, that KTA has qualified CWL, NDT, ACI, PCI inspectors who are experiencing shop fabrication inspection and field inspection. That's included in the documents that you have in front of you.
Thank you for that information. I wanted it on the record. Thanks a lot. How does the service ensure the accuracy and reliability of its inspections?
Through, I mean, through the certifications that these individuals hold, right? So they're held to the standard of the certifications that they're given, along with the fact that, you know, whatever titles they may have, whether that's their engineering license or whatever, would ensure that they are required to do their job, essentially. If you're asking if there's a checker for the checker, I don't know if there's a checker for the checker. But there are obviously multiple levels. The industry itself has its own checks, and then this is our check on their checks. So I guess we're the checker for the checker.
How does this service ensure compliance with local, state, and federal regulations?
Yep. Similarly, through the same certifications, through the same processes, through understanding what is that they're there to look for. That is exactly their job, is to ensure that we're meeting our specifications and standards.
What measures are in place to identify and mitigate safety risk?
I would assume that works through, what is it, Veritas Steel? I would guess that they have their own OSHA regulations when they're there. Are you asking, like, actually in the plant?
The City of Omaha is responsible for this.
So we have our own safety, you know, each contractor, once everything goes to site, right, they have their own safety protocols. We would follow all that. As far as what's happening when the girders are being constructed, I would assume that all follows OSHA, that they're up there following all the, you know, same rules and regulations.
Can you provide references or case studies from previous projects?
For KTA, we could certainly reach out and seek that out.
But we don't have that information right now, right?
I do not, but I'm sure HDR does. That's why they reached out to us.
Another good point, why they might have needed to be here today. What is the service track record with similar projects in the jurisdiction?
Similarly, I would have to reach out to HDR for that.
Gotcha. Doesn't look like you're going to be able to answer my questions today. So unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to vote for this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? Oh, Ms. Melton, I'm sorry. Your light's on.
Oh, yes, I just have a follow-up.
Go for it.
I think you want to verify HDR is actually a worldwide company.
Yeah, HDR is one of the largest, most well-known engineering firms in the world.
And I think we're fortunate enough, they have their headquarters right here in Omaha.
Yes, we are.
One of our Fortune 500 companies that
We are.
We're blessed to have in this city.
They have been a very good partner to us on our other projects. We were very fortunate. They were kind of able to help us resolve this situation when it did come up. And this is very, this is really important, that somebody goes up and does do this work up there, right? This is safety protocols for people that drive over this bridge every day to ensure that these are properly constructed, that everything is how it's supposed to be, and that, you know, we don't have some catastrophic failure. This is one of the checks that we have for that.
Yeah, and I mean, I would have to say, when you're replacing a bridge,
Yeah.
making sure that you actually have qualified
Yeah.
engineers that know what they're doing and have done this
Yes.
multiple times and all over the world. And
Yeah.
it's important. And I would have to say, we are very fortunate to have them located here, so.
No, I'm very fortunate. And they have been very good to us on other projects. So we're confident in their ability to handle this.
Thank you. Well, that's why I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleague for pointing out that HDR is a worldwide company, and its reputation speaks for itself. However, we still have a responsibility as city council to ensure constituents are aware of their credibility and what they do, and the fact that we are not opening ourselves up for risk. These are basic questions that were asked, and no one is able to answer those questions. Credibility, history, all of those things are important, but I believe our constituents have a right to know the answer to these questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Bagley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item thirty-seven, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. to provide professional services on the Enterprise Park roadway project.
Public hearing and vote on number thirty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Is this HDR?
This is an HDR contract, number thirty-seven. Are you a proponent, Donnie?
Yes, sir, because me and Mr. HDR, we have a wonderful program, working on Egypt programs, building the bridge. I think Mrs. Johnson is right, and Ms. Melton is right, because some of these companies, you don't spend a lot of time in the community, Mr. Fredson, I had noticed. But I did see you down there working on that runabout down in your district. But I think HDR is a wonderful company. The only problem I have is what Mrs. Johnson was saying. Congress never paid me for the pictures I took of the bridge in Cairo, but HDR did.
All right, Donnie. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in the same situation that I was in in item number thirty-six. I'm sure that Steve probably don't have the answers that I need for thirty-seven since HDR is not present. So I'm not going to be label the body or the constituents with questions that no one can answer. So unfortunately, I won't be able to vote for this either.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thank you. I didn't, you popped on. I was gonna ask someone from Public Works. There you are. Thank you.
Excuse me, but could you please turn the microphone up to your level where we can hear you?
Can you go ahead, please?
Hello, my name is Krista Wassner. I'm the design engineer for Public Works.
If you'd like to, actually, do this for me, if you would. I mean, there is a process
Yes.
that we go through when the bids are put out.
Yes.
And then when bids are returned, we make sure that they conform to the requirements of the work that's to be done. All the investigations as it relates to certifications or requirements are all confirmed by your department.
Correct.
And then it's, that document then is circulated, and it has to get sign off from Public Works, the mayor's office, probably planning, and I'm not sure who, I forgot to look at the cover letter on this one, but
Finance.
if you would. I mean,
Yeah.
so the citizens of Omaha do know
Yeah, so
that there is a lot of due diligence that goes on before this is even presented to us.
Right. So in this case, it's a professional services agreement, as well as the case that So in this case, it's a professional services agreement, as well as the case that Steve had as well, professional services agreement with HDR. So this particular contract, we did do an on-call RFP in 2023. We requested from the consultants their qualifications. We went through a review of those proposals and qualifications. We shortlisted five consultants, which means that they are able to do contracts over $250,000. We went through an interview process, and we have them ranked. We chose HDR in order to, because they knew the most about the project, as well as being able to provide the best benefit to the taxpayers of Omaha, to design this Enterprise Road and Enterprise Park roadway project. In regard to selection and qualifications, that is the city's process, and that is followed on every professional services agreement that Public Works works on.
Thank you. I think that's important to point out, that this is not just something that appears in front of us without any vetting or any investigation.
Correct.
So I appreciate you walking us through that, how the process is. And then specifically on this project for the Enterprise roadway, the truck route, the new truck route, which is very important for the development of really the north downtown area, millworks, marker hood, hot shops, that area kind of north of Schwab Field. This has been worked on for a number of years. We finally have kind of a pathway to make this a reality. And so I think this is a very important project, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could you please come back up?
Yes.
I want to thank my colleague for pointing out that this has been worked on, this truck route has been worked on for a number of years, given the fact that it is in District Two. Unfortunately, as the city councilperson put in place in 2021, unfortunately, I don't have that historical background. So it is great that he's able to make a firm decision on such a huge project that will happen in my district. Unfortunately, I don't have that background, so my questions have validity, not to be minimized. So, again, we will point out the fact that it would have been helpful if there had been some engagement from HDR, as well as the Public Works Department, for my community to talk about what's going on here regarding the truck route. Again, pointing out that this has been going on for a long time, which means if it started before 2021, this truck route, and there was engagement in the community, and there was discussion that was brought about, a lot of moving parts, a lot of discussion, no details, here we are in 2024. There's a lot of information here that we don't have answers to for this particular district in which we're going to have a truck route. So would you like to provide that information for those that are listening, as well as on the record, as to where we're at today regarding this truck route and how this will move forward? Thank you.
Sure. I can do the best I can. This project has actually been going on much longer than I've been here as well.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. So we have done some, the city has gone, and we've studied this multiple times, so we have multiple reports. I can share those with you, absolutely. I think this has been reviewed since 2007, and this has been the most viable option in all of the studies that we've identified. And we will be furthering public outreach with the community as concepts are created. We do not have formal concepts to provide yet. It's hard to explain, so until we do have those concepts, we did not want to go out and do formal public engagement.
So can you expand on what you think public outreach might look like?
We will have public meetings. We have that as part of our scope. We will also have a website on Keep Omaha Moving for the public to review project information and project updates, and we do that with every project that we do here at the city. We try to create a formal website for access when it works.
Point of order. Let's let Mr. Harding finish his line of questioning, and then you can proceed on.
Move question. Second.
I'm in discussion.
Point of order is not well taken. Councilmembers have the right to get up and ask questions of our staff members.
The young lady was at the mic speaking, and that is not...
That doesn't matter, it's allowed. The call the question is out of order, you have to have the floor.
Oh, so we are able to be rude to our speakers? Go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry that you have to face all of this agitation in the background.
I'm not offended.
Thank you.
Would you call me up, please?
I will.
I lost track of what the question was.
Public outreach, what does that look like?
We'll be doing public meetings and primarily the website. I think that really covers most of it.
So will that be on the web? Will there be surveys? Will the city councilperson be included in that public outreach?
Yes, we try to include our councilmembers to every public outreach.
Thank you. Thanks. And I'm going to ask that Larry come up. He has a question.
Larry Stor, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm against the resolution, but thank you for pulling it so that the citizens can have a conversation about it. That's the only way. We don't have time to read all of your documents online before we come down here, and they obviously don't tell us everything. And we have a right to know, don't we?
We do.
Yes. So the only way to find out is to challenge you, and I'm sorry, we have to do that so much. But I also will challenge you, under the Open Meetings Act, reasonable opportunity to hear. I can hear all of you, except him. He refuses to pull the microphone up in the air so that people can hear what he says. I can hear him if I move down to the front row or second row. I've mentioned this before. I'm not that hard of hearing, I don't have to read that screen back there, and by the way, that's got a second, 20-second delay to it also. That might be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. The fact that I'm complaining about it is not a defense. The fact that I didn't complain about it is not a defense. But I don't intend to spend my money, or her time, or money, or yours suing under the Open Meetings Act for something that's supposed to be done day for day, every time. And I don't like watching your faces when Juanita is talking, and apparently, there's a partnership between Amy and him because they like to talk back and forth and make faces at each other. Why you did I call them out of order? And then they get out of their seat and go ask a lawyer a question, or around there while she's talking. You are not giving her the respect that she demands, or that citizens demand, under the Open Meetings Act, or the U.S. Constitution, or the Nebraska Constitution, which needs to be rewritten, I guess. Thank you.
So in conclusion, this project began, the truck route began in 2021, unfortunately, before 2021. Unfortunately, it would have been very nice and respectful to engage the community further before arriving at a destination today. We should be getting updates along the way, especially when we have projects that has been looming for years. Again, it would have been nice if HDR would have been present to talk about what's going to happen here. More importantly, I have a responsibility for my constituents to make sure that they're informed and we know what's going on, so therefore, I'm not going to be able to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. And councilmembers, let's do make sure we have our microphones as close as possible so people can hear, but I would also remind those in the audience, there are listening devices available, should they need one right here in the corner. There's a motion to approve and a second. Roll call.
Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item 38, a resolution to approve the task order agreement with Olson, Inc., for on-call construction engineering services on the Signal Infrastructure Phase C1 project.
Public hearing and vote on number 38 is today. Proponents, please.
Steve Vu, construction engineer, city of Omaha. If you guys have questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson.
Steve, if you could come up, please? It's been motioned and approved, and now I get the opportunity to ask questions. Imagine that.
For yours, Ms. Johnson, are you...
Yeah, I'm collecting my thoughts.
All right.
We're talking about signal instructions. What are the providers' qualifications and certifications?
By provider Olson on our PSA. Olson has performed this service for us for a number of years in a row, specifically, this is Part C, they did the B contract and the A contract before that. They, so experience essentially is their main qualification at this point with this. As part of our 2023, 2024 on-call list that we put out, where we accept RFPs from all the different consultants, and we put out our list, they ranked highly enough in there to be considered for this project. That includes the qualifications there, I guess, just generally qualified.
Can you provide any examples and outcomes of previous Signal infrastructure projects?
Yep, so Phase B, the phase previous to this one, and then Phase A before that. And there may have been others that I was not a part of, but I do know that they were part of the last two that led up to this one.
Thank you. Have they been customers of other municipalities or cities?
Certainly. Olson, in general, is a nationwide firm, as far as I know, and they work with, especially with the local municipalities around us, Bellevue, Council Bluffs, you know, the ones immediate to us. I know that they do work in all those, Lincoln, they do work in all those places.
And do we know who the personnel, who will be the key personnel assigned to this project, in case we have constituents that might need to ask some questions?
As far as that would go, Steve Edloff through my office would be that person.
Steve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, and the timeline?
This is a 180-day project, so that should take us just right up to the end of the year.
So if there are any mishaps constituents encounter, who would they, they would contact you as well?
Yep, contact our office, and we will, we will take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 39, a resolution to approve the agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation to assist with establishing a state safety oversight program.
Public hearing and vote on number 39 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Stor, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 3, Omaha 68132. I thought we were supposed to come to the microphone and name off all the ones that we were for or against. So I'm just going to summarize here, I'm against 39, 41, and 43, mainly because there's not enough definition on these items to tell us what it is. For example, on number 39, what kind of safety oversight are we talking about? Like a discussion on that, please. Number 41, Vision Zero seems to me like kind of a remodeled version of the book 1984.
We'll get to that item next.
Like some discussion on that. And number 43, the Docless shared scooter program for group riders on scooters on the city of Omaha sidewalks? Like some discussion on that. That's the way I understand the way it was written, Pete.
Those will be heard separately.
It says, come down and tell us which items, okay?
Larry, those will be heard separately next, if you want to speak to them.
Thank you.
We're on number 39. Any other opponents? Number 39. Seeing none, public hearing's closed.
Motion approval.
Motion a second. Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, when I opened up the attachment, it says here, this agreement is between the city of Omaha, Nebraska, local public agency, and collectively, the two entities may be referred to as parties. Whereas the city of Omaha and Omaha Metro are developing a project for the construction and operation of a streetcar system along a route approximately three miles in length in downtown Omaha area, and the project is known as the Omaha Streetcar Project. And we're going to stop right there. I'm not going to support this because the streetcar project is something that is not a benefit to those that live east of 72nd. Public transportation has been lacking for decades, and there is no end in sight as for as a resolution. Just as I voted against the streetcar, I will not vote for supporting items associated with the streetcar. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on number 39. Roll call.
Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item 41, a resolution to approve the grant award notice and memorandum of understanding with AARP regarding the implementation of the city of Omaha's Vision Zero Action Plan.
Public hearing and vote on number 41 is today. Proponents, please.
Jeff Subcheck, Vision Zero Coordinator, Public Works, here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Jeff, if you would, I requested this come off, the consent agenda, just because I think it's notable, right? It's one of our first Vision Zero projects for funding since we adopted the Vision Zero Plan, and this, in fact, is a grant from the double ARP to the city of Omaha to do several products they believe will be helpful to senior citizens for pedestrian safety. I wonder if you want to talk about that just a little bit?
Yeah, we're using that money to purchase two modular pedestrian refuge alleys, which are kind of a quick build type of assembling a little median refuge where pedestrians build across, and we're locating those on two locations that are identified in our high injury network that have killing and serious injury crashes, one intersection that's had a recent fatality, too. So we're trying to improve pedestrian safety at these locations, which also are transit stops as well. So we think this is a really big benefit to cost opportunity for us, considering, yeah, this is a grant that there's zero match, and we're just taking this opportunity to maximize that resource, and if hopefully this product, if it works well, we can hopefully use this as another safety tool systemically throughout the city.
Great, thank you. I think it's notable for that reason, too, and I want to thank the double ARP. I think it's notable for that reason, too, and I want to thank the double A R P for helping us with the funding. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item forty-two, a resolution to approve the agreement with Rabble Mill to revitalize the Benson Community Center.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-two is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, here as proponent for the agreement. This represents an exciting opportunity to engage more with youth in this area. This partnership also is serving as a catalyst for some philanthropic support to revitalize the Benson Community Center and bring the programming, a style of programming to this area that we haven't had before, and an activity increase that we haven't seen there for a few years since dealing with some of the difficulties of the building.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you, President. Thank you, Council. I'm Andrew Norman, two nine three two North Fifty-seventh Street, thirteen-year resident of Benson, here speaking as co-founder and co-ED of the five oh one C three nonprofit Rabble Mill and as a proponent for Resolution Forty-two to revitalize the Benson Community Center. We all want to live in Omaha where we're excited about the future for all kids, but to do it, we need to think long-term and to think and to dream differently, to solve some of our greatest problems, from youth delinquency, incarceration, and dropping out, to businesses starved for talent. Rabble Mill is helping solve these problems in Lincoln at our award-winning youth space, The Bay, and we're excited to be expanding programming in Omaha at the Benson Community Center. In Lincoln, for fourteen years, we've built a successful model to serve youth from four to twenty-four years old through out-of-school engagement, alternative education, and workforce development, with the objectives to help these youth find their community and ultimately achieve a job, further education, or start their own business. Our Lincoln space is called The Bay, a twenty thousand square foot youth space in a location that's both the city's most highly impoverished and features the highest population of BIPOC individuals. At The Bay, we specialize in serving youth who are marginalized, disengaged, and disconnected. We provide a safe place to be, a safe place to be, including late and on weekends, incredible trained mentors, and experiential learning that's uniquely relevant to Gen Z and Gen Alpha, from skateboarding to digital music to content creation to gaming to fashion. In twenty twenty-three, we served more than seventeen hundred unique youth in Lincoln last year. In Omaha, we served more than eight hundred students through after-school programming in partnership with twenty-five different schools and organizations, but we've lacked a physical space in Omaha to be able to let Omaha kids experience the magic of The Bay, and that changes today. Benson is one of the city's most diverse neighborhoods, which features one of the highest youth density populations, and there are six schools within two miles, but hardly anything to do for kids after school. Thanks to a generous gift from Lozier Foundation to fund long-needed improvements to the Benson Community Center, we've been fortunate to partner with Omaha City Parks Foundation and Parks and Rec to be part of the community facilities revitalization and provide a place to be, something to do, and someone who cares for kids in this area. We're just one provider who will be using this space, but we've already worked with Parks and Rec to turn its gym into the city's only public indoor skate park. And this afternoon, Girls Inc. is bringing a dozen girls to come learn skateboarding there. Another partner, Kids Can, will bring a vanload of students tomorrow. We'll be doing summer camps in July featuring digital music, content creation, gaming, and skateboarding. We plan to ramp up our open drop-in hours this fall, and we will also start operating our innovative workforce development program, Gap Year, for eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds. It's important to note that thanks to Omaha's philanthropic support, all of our programming from skate school to fashion camp to Gap Year is provided free or pay what you can to eliminate barriers for parents who lack means. We've built or are building partnerships with Benson High, Monroe Middle, Benson West, Rose Hill, Saint Bernard, and organizations from Mays and Omaha Home for Boys to BFF to Heartland Family Service, the list goes on. At Rabble Mill, we believe kids can only dream as big as they've seen, and thanks to this partnership, we're thrilled to be in position to help north-central Omaha kids dream bigger. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Andrew. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Again, I'm opposed to it because I don't think there's enough information primarily, but also because I think it's another duplication, another five oh one C three community partner, another way to get tax money out of my billfold. And excuse me, I thought there was a community center already there, probably already financed paid for by the City of Omaha over lots of years, and a little bit confused about what he said, who this is for, the youth population. Then he said, talked about the schools. Excuse me, the schools have already lots of different programs, and we have other five oh one C threes dealing with other, the same types of things. Kids can go here for that and here for this. The one up on seventy-five alive or North Seventy-five or something like that way up in North Omaha is for one, but he mentioned other community agencies that are five oh one C threes that they work with, and there's the Boys and Girls Club, and my question is, I guess some of these things aren't working because we need another one. Maybe we ought to cut funding to some of the others that aren't, maybe aren't working. So let's have a little bit more discussion on this. Thank you.
Any other opponents today?
Danny Aron Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I think the minor problems you council are having is nothing. You should see what's going on in Chicago, Los Angeles, all the problems they're having. You guys, this is just easy stuff that we're doing today, so don't worry about it. Don't forget to invite someone to dinner over the minor issues.
Any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. This isn't my district, and I took it off consent agenda on purpose because I thought it was worth highlighting a great partnership we just talked about here. I want to welcome Rabble Mill to Benson. They've been a great partner already with our Parks Department. I want to thank also Mr. Kalsovich for that work, and it's already produced results, the Lozier Foundation helping us to repair the Benson Community Center, which was in disrepair and the top floor being unusable but for this event and but for this private fundraising that has made this possible. I'm also really encouraged by the services I know Rabble Mill provides and has already done so successfully in Lincoln. It's going to be a great addition to Benson. Andrew, I know you're partnering already with the Benson Creative District and the Benson Improvement District, and everyone is involved in this proposition, so I think it's well worth highlighting this, and I'm pleased to support it today, and thank you both for your work. Ms. Melton?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure what's attached here, if you read the partnership agreement, which is actually not written in legal ease, it's very easy to read. It states that Rabble Mill is actually paying the city two hundred and fifty dollars a month for use of a community center that's already there and for a space that isn't being used. So the taxpayers are actually benefiting from this. In addition to all the kids that Rabble Mill is helping, no one's losing here and no taxpayer dollars are being used. We're actually getting money. And then a private donor is then going to improve a taxpayer-owned community center. So the taxpayers definitely benefit in addition to the kids. Thank you very much, Andrew, for all your work and working with all those different organizations that are also privately funded by good philanthropic people in our community. So I look forward to supporting this.
Thank you.
And I, I'll make them, I know you can't make the motion, so I'm going to make the motion to approve for you.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks for being here.
Item forty-three, a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Operating Agreement of a Dockless Shared Scooter Program to allow the rental and operation of dockless electric scooters twenty-four hours a day as well as allow for group rides.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-three is today. Proponents, please. I think we have the proponent by Zoom. We'll get you off mute here in one minute. All right, try that. Yep.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Lee Aaron Foley. I'm Senior Director of Government and Community Relations for Lime and representing our Lime Omaha team. Lime has been in operations in Omaha since twenty twenty-one as the only operator, and we've worked very closely with Park Omaha and the mobility team to ensure that we are enacting the mayor and the city's goals of providing alternatives to car transportation and supporting public transportation across the city while reducing congestion on the city's roads. We believe that this ordinance, this amendment, will go a long way in continuing to strengthen the city's investment in shared micro-mobility and our partnership as we continue to work through the best ways to provide service, meet demand, especially ahead of the College World Series coming, and make sure that our devices are available, that they are safe, that they are affordable, and they're sustainable for all Omahans and all of Omaha's guests and visitors to the city. So we do ask for the support to expand operating hours across the city and enable group ride, which will continue to grow ridership, which we've seen grow eighty percent year over year from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, and we look forward to even more growth in twenty twenty-four. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette, Omaha, six eight one three two. I'm against it. I don't see how this works with the earlier thing on safety, state safety oversight stuff. I already know that lots of kids on scooters ride all over the sidewalks. So now we're, we're going to allow them to share a scooter, have group scooter rides? How many people, how wide across the sidewalk are we going to be trying to avoid? They should be avoiding us, but I don't see where this is their very good idea. This is more or less saying the streets, the sidewalks belong to you. Group rides, you know, for parades, I can see it, but for anything other than a parade, I don't know why we ought to be encouraging group rides on scooters. Maybe discuss it a little further for us, please. We didn't all have time to read the attached. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start off with, not where I was going to start off with, but I'll, I'll address one of the questions that was just posed, so that the group rides is not...
Excuse me, sir, I'll leave, but would you please put the microphone up where we can hear you?
It can't be any closer to my mouth unless I'm eating it. A group ride is not multiple people on one scooter. A group ride is allowing one person to pay for a number of people in their group to each have their own scooter. So that's what a group ride is. Lee Aaron, I'm sorry. Couple of quick questions for you. I know really what we're trying, what you're asking to do is to expand the, the hours, or at least in part, expand the hours for operation for, for the scooters, and I'd like you to talk a little bit about that. And we talk a lot about, you know, Vision Zero and safety, and I, I do have some concerns about, you know, operating these at all hours of the night when it's a little dark out. They are lit, I know, but if, if you would address that.
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Harding. And so when it comes to expanding operating hours, this is a trend that we're seeing in, in the cities that we serve across the country, Chicago being the most recent city to eliminate its ten PM or started at ten PM, moved to midnight, now it's twenty-four seven operations. The City of Atlanta expanded their operating hours to twenty-four seven, and with the City of Atlanta, with the Georgia Institute of Technology conducted a study on the impact of its curfew, its scooter ban after nine PM, and the result of that study was that traffic actually increased. When you don't give people another option but to drive, that means that everyone who needs to drive is stuck behind a driver who probably would have preferred another way to get around. And so this is a tool, and just one tool in the box to address congestion, promote sustainable transportation and affordable transportation. And when it comes to safety in cities that we've seen, such as Boulder, Colorado, pure cities such as Cleveland, Ohio, when they expand operating hours, the incident rate does not increase. And right now in Omaha, we're looking at an incident rate of about ninety-nine point five percent, meaning these are reports directly to Lime from our riders who are in crashes or incidents with someone else that they feel the need to report, and these are measures that we keep track of and that we report to the city and that the city requires us to report. And so we're in constant communication with the City of Omaha, constant communication with the Omaha Police Department in making sure that we can provide as safe a service as possible. We're also strong partners with Heartland Bike Share to make sure that we are co-locating at locations and that people have a range of options to be able to get around. And when it comes to late-night riding, the driving force behind expanding operating hours is not necessarily capturing tourism, but these are requests that we receive from third-shift workers who are looking for ways to be able to get around. Our research shows that metro buses, the average bus route ends around eight twelve PM. On weekdays and on weeknights or weekends, it's about nine fifteen PM. And so the time that allows for people to be able to get around in a safe way for folks who don't have access to cars or, or don't have continual access to cars or who are avoiding ride share for any number of reasons, have yet another tool in their toolbox to be able to get around the city safely, particularly if they're looking for ways to be able to get to work or from, or from work to home after the buses have stopped running and ride share becomes wildly expensive when the, when everything else is letting out at that time.
Okay, thanks. Couple, couple follow-up questions on that. So I, I was interested to hear you say that from the, the study from Atlanta, that traffic increased. I think what you meant, you meant the traffic of scooter use increased, right? That's what you were talking about?
No, no, it's car traffic. Car congestion increased when scooters were, when the curfew was implemented, a nine PM curfew.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Twenty nineteen. And over that period of that curfew, traffic did increase.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me. The, can you talk a little bit about ridership specifically in Omaha and revenues specifically in Omaha for Lime?
Yeah, absolutely. So Lime's partnership with the City of Omaha requires that we pay permit fees and trip fees for our operations, and so that's something that we see typically across the cities that we serve, and where we serve more than three hundred cities around the world, Omaha being one, where we align on the best ways forward. And so our aligned incentive is to see trip growth, is to make sure that, just as was mentioned previously on another item, is with the city's Vision Zero Plan, is to contribute to fewer cars being on the street, and so we've seen eighty percent trip growth year over year from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. That was about one hundred and two thousand trips in twenty twenty-two to one hundred eighty-six thousand trips in two, last year in twenty twenty-three. We're on track to surpass that number in twenty twenty-four at about eighty-two thousand trips a year to date right now. And so we are looking forward to the ability to be able to work to strengthen our partnership with the city, generate more revenue for the city, and work more closely with the Police Department to ensure safe riding.
Okay. And, and just to be clear, Vision Zero is not only just about reducing the amount of vehicular traffic, it's, it's about safety, too, and, and we want to make sure that, you know, there, there are injuries and sometimes fatalities, likely knock on wood, not in Omaha with, associated with scooters, but that's something that we want to make sure that we pay attention to when we're talking about Vision Zero as this being one of the components of that plan. Lastly, Lee Aaron, I wanted to ask, too, you, you did mention something about the College World Series, and I want to make sure that in, in what we're considering here today, it does not change any of the geofenced areas that are currently in place in the City of Omaha, does it?
That's correct. So all the geofenced zones, the no-ride zones, the slow zones, to ensure that pedestrians are safe and that our vehicles are not ending up where they don't need to be, will remain in place for the College World Series, and we're continuing to coordinate with the city to strengthen those protections.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good afternoon. How you doing today? Sorry, I didn't get your name. Forgive me.
Lee Aaron Foley.
Mr. Foley, good afternoon. Couple of questions for you. I believe it was said that this, amongst other things, it's tailored to help service in... industry workers that are working late at night to have some transportation available that is not currently available with the scooters, correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Bagley.
Okay, and I always am respectful of the dignity of those workers in the industries that work late at night, especially during the World Series coming up in downtown in the Old Market, in my district, in Blackstone, in the midtown in the urban core. One question, maybe a couple I got for you. Refresh my memory and people out there listening. So I ride a scooter from point X to point Y, and I leave it. What's the process after that scooter is left?
So let's use, say, Midtown as an example. Midtown is where we are working closely with Park Omaha on identifying the best parking locations. Say that we use, what we implement in many cities are parking corrals, where we require our riders to park those scooters or their bikes in those corrals. This is a program that we're looking to build out and expand in Omaha throughout the next year, throughout the summer particularly. But without those corrals, right now in a dockless system, our riders will park, they take a photo of their vehicle of where they've parked. Our team reviews those entered photos, and that gives us the ability to say whether or not we're assessing a fine or a fee on a rider or taking our progressive fine structure to them, which means that if you violate our parking rules or our rules of the road too many times and it's documented, we ultimately have the ability to deplatform or remove a rider from the platform. But for parking, they take a photo, they end their trip, and they're required to end them off of the sidewalk, not blocking the sidewalk, preferably in the furnishing zone or in designated parking along the bike rack. And from there, they'll receive a notification from Lime whether or not they parked their vehicle properly. And if it is not parked properly, we receive complaints from the city, and we are required to resolve those complaints by sending out our team members to go and address missed parked scooters.
Okay, that's a great explanation. On those complaints that are made, how quick do you guys respond to them?
Our aim is to have those resolved within two hours.
Okay. And those corrals, I've been kind of digging around a little bit, those are, that's a great idea, is you guys get better perfecting this system in Omaha. I think we approved this right after I got on the city council in June of '21, if my shaky memory serves me correctly. But I appreciate that explanation, and again, this is transportation. It frustrates some people when, it reminds me, my brothers, they lead the big wheel in the middle of the driveway, and my dad's going to back up, he's screaming at all of us, not me, of course, but it's one of those things that, the fines are important to condition the drivers, number one, you know, don't write these things on the sidewalk, little side commentary. But it's important that people understand that there are systems in place to apply fines if somebody isn't following the rules, as you explained there, Mr. Foley. So I appreciate you zooming in today. And as frustrating as it can be for some people with the scooters, myself in that camp at times, but I, for the bigger picture, the dignity of those workers that maybe don't have transportation or busing, it can zip people around before the streetcar gets rolling in the urban core, and it'll help people get back and forth quickly to their place of employment, to where they live if they want to go enjoy a restaurant on their night off. But the safety is the number-one concern, and I appreciate your continuing work on that with the corrals maybe coming in the future and fining people that don't follow the rules. So thanks, Mr. President, and thanks, Mr. Foley.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Mr. Hutt?
Good afternoon. I have never, I've never used your service. I apologize. So I have some questions just because I don't have any basis to draw from. So what's the typical rate if somebody uses a scooter? Is it by the hour? Is it by the mile?
Yeah, so if you, Councilmember Hutt, thank you for the question. If you were to approach a scooter and you have either the Lime app or the Uber app downloaded or the Google app, you will be able to unlock one of our devices on the streets of Omaha. And so you approach that device, you scan the QR code through the app, then you'll see the pricing feature, and that's $1 to unlock, and in Omaha, it's 39 cents per minute. But we also maintain for folks with lower incomes a program called Lime Access, which provides 50% discounts to those in road, and those are people who would typically receive state or local or federal benefits such as SNAP, who qualify. And so at 39 cents per minute, the typical rider would be able to enjoy or move about for what we see is about 10-minute trips on average across the city of Omaha.
Never mind, the phone call is happening here. We'll try and figure out where that's coming from. I don't think I've ever heard that before.
Okay, so 39 cents per minute, a dollar meter drop fee, if you will, 39 cents per minute, and is that the total? Is there any additional charges at the end of the, at the end of the trip?
Usually taxes are assessed at the end, and so riders receive a very detailed receipt via email or via their chosen form of communication, I should say, once they end their trip.
Okay. I've got more questions. I don't want to tie up the council meeting, so you can find my email address if you just reach out to me and send me your contact information. We'll talk more later.
Absolutely. Thank you, member, Councilmember Hutt.
Oh, one more question. May I, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Florida's yours. On the group rates or the group program, do you have an age limit?
Yes, the current age limit to operate a shared scooter in Omaha is 18, and we are required by the city to scan IDs for those trips. And as part of the condition for our conversations with the city advancing was our ability to implement this rider ID technology for group ride. And so those, all group riders, so if there's one 18-year-old, they have to then scan the IDs of the other riders who may not even be a part of that profile, but they are part of the trip, and so they have to meet the age requirement as well.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. Is there a motion?
Move the approval.
Second. Motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Rowe? Bagley? Harding? Hug? Johnson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 44, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 18 of the Omaha Municipal Code regarding nuisance weeds and home composting is amendment of the whole requested by the Law Department.
Councilmembers, the vote on number 44 is today, and there's an amendment of the whole.
Move the amendment of the whole.
Second. There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Rowe? Bagley? Harding? Hug? Johnson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 45, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for Metropolitan Utilities District versus City of Omaha in the amount of $1,100,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
Motion, a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Rowe? Bagley? Harding? Hug? Johnson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 46, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 43763 to correct the legal description on the Burt Street vacation.
Public hearing on number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 47, an ordinance vacating 17th Street Right Way located north of Nicholas Street. Planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 47 is today.
Linda Toomey, Santa Francis House, 1401 North 18th Street. Care to answer any questions?
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We'll get that phone address, but the public hearing is closed on this item. There's no further lights. Next item, please.
Item 48, an ordinance to transfer permanent easement and land to Reinhardt Food Service LLC to maintain and operate a storm sewer drainage structure located at 1331 Ida Street.
Public hearing on number 48 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Sounds like we better hurry to these next items.
Item 49, an ordinance to approve the contract with West Fork LLC for the 2024 Concrete Diamond Grinding Various Locations Project.
Public hearing on number 49 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 50, an ordinance to establish a Class B flammable liquids storage district, number B-220, located at 6303 Q Street.
Public hearing on number 50 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 51, an ordinance to approve an amended real estate purchase and sale agreement with Enterprise Industrial Park LLC for the transfer and sale of a portion of the property located at 1410 Locust Street in the amount of $2 million.
Public hearing on number 51 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 52 through 71, did not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, a second to adjourn. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Rowe? Bagley? Harding? Hug? Johnson? Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:40.